Good evening, I'm calling to order the October 14 Fountain City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Actually, I'm gonna stop one second, Bezzy, can you check the microphones because I'm not hearing through the... Sorry. Testing? Great, thank you. Okay, Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Geek? Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
I have...
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any cards for public to be heard? Okay, citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Thank you, my first card I have here is Cory Rothenma? Rothema? Okay, and you want to talk to us about the Fountain Community Theater?
Hit that middle button right there. There you go.
Better?
Yeah, perfect.
My name is Cory Rothenma, I run Fountain Community Theater. So actually, I just wanted to, more so than anything, re-intruce myself, I've been here with you guys a few times with Mr. Trainer, how are you? I was hoping, actually, I saw on Facebook that you guys recently hired a communications director, I believe, this gentleman right here. I was wondering if we could partner in some way. So Fountain has a theater, we've had a theater since 2014, but it's not super well-publicized. And I was hoping you and I could touch base, I'm not going to take too much time. So more than anything, you and I could touch base and talk about possibly promoting that. Fountain is one of the best towns I've ever seen about getting people to come out and do stuff, especially post-COVID. Getting people to actually come out when not. And our theater is stationed right down, right next to the Fountain Middle School. And quite often, as it's emblazoned on my sweater, I didn't know Fountain had a theater, even though we're right here with them. So sir, if we could interface, I won't take any more of your time, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and the last card I have is from Cory Applegate, and give us an update from the county. Welcome Commissioner.
Thank you. It's the Cory Show this evening. Cory Applegate County Commissioner, District 4 for El Paso County. Mayor, Council, how are we all this evening? Wanted to pat you guys on the back, as well as the county, give a quick update, budgets, tis the season. You guys, I heard from your budget work session, I heard there's no shortfall, you guys are good. It's in the black and the green, as they say. We in the county are in the same boat, we're not doing any mass hiring, but we're definitely not going to be laying off. We're not seeing a crisis like these other municipalities in the area, as well as the state. So, I applaud you guys and gals, that's awesome. I recently was approached by a veteran, a small business owner, about expanding VA services in the south, south end of the county. He actually got with me, he got with Commissioner Wyson, who's our representative on the MAC, so the Military Affairs Committee, he's a vote on that board. And so he's kind of put it on our radar as like, we've got to start expanding veteran services down here, we have four Carson. We have a lot of, there's a lot of like, airmen, cadets that get out of the military, like in the Air Force. Move all the way down to Whiteville Security Fountain area because they love the cost of living down here, it's a little bit cheaper. So we've got to find a way to kind of expand those VA services, we've talked with Bob McLaughlin, kind of had that early preliminary talk. So it's just something we're going to continue to keep on our radar. And so, I want to continue to just mention that to Fountain, to say that we're looking to do this. Snow plows in the Peaceful Valley areas, we see an uptick in our weather charts of change. I know that the county recently, I voted on this, one of the first things I voted on in January. And we expanded this, we switched a couple streets with the city of Fountain, so we're actually going to be plowing the Peaceful Valley neighborhood. I know, Councilmember, I know, you live out there, so if your road's not getting plowed, please tell me, because I'll take responsibility on that one. So those three or four streets that are in Fountain there, in that area, let us know. I mean, if that Peaceful Valley area is not getting plowed, I'll get back on DPW. So, we said we would take streets and take the responsibility of the clearing and the removal for the snow. I want to thank everybody too for the city of Fountain, especially for the congressional-directed spending. I'll have you know, I got an update today, that road on South Academy, so that little stretch, basically from I-25, where it goes over to the Venetucci Highlands. Hopefully that contractor is going to have that done early next year. And so I know there was some congressional spending in the city of Fountain, yeah, you guys directed, so thank you that. And yeah, hopefully, DPW's been staying on that contractor, they've been pushing them hard to try, get them done before that commission date. And I'm excited because I know I just, I signed off on the grant for the building over here across the way. So hopefully we get that, we get that business in there. And I just, I'd love to hear an update, so I hope that, you know, in the near future, I hear about somebody moving into that location. And with that, Council, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Commissioner? Councilmember Rick?
Thank you for coming tonight, Commissioner. We could use your help with an issue. 8587. From Willis Springs Pond Road all the way to Main Street. I've been trying to get CDOT out here to sweep that because there is years of sand and dirt and junk there. I've contacted Senator Snyder's office, Representative Bradfield, they've been trying to work with CDOT. If you could throw your weight behind that, trying to get that area cleaned up a bit, I would appreciate it.
Sure, yeah.
You're doing a great job, I appreciate what you're doing. But if you could help us out on that, anything you could do would be appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. Email early and often with CDOT, so I tell everybody that all the time. But yeah, I'll send them something, I'll let them know, so.
Thank you, sir.
The more voices in that, the better, because...
Exactly, of course.
Yeah, we're all fighting with them, yeah. Not just sand, you know everything else because you drive that road too.
Yeah, yeah, I live in a sophomore neighborhood, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks, any help with the VA, I mean, we've all been beating the drum down here for years, and so keep working on it, it's some more voices. You know, I don't, I hope it's not going to be a budget item, it's going to take two or three years to get through. So, I mean, I'm Scott, we get stuff done pretty fast down here, so if there's anything, we can assist with that, let us know, okay?
Yeah, we will, we'll keep in touch, and then, as well as, not only is it on my radar, but it's on Bill Wyson's radar, he's a commissioner from District 3.
Right.
But ex-military, he's on the MAC, he's on the Military Affairs Committee, so, yeah. Any help he can lend to the situation, he'd be more than happy to see something come in down here, so.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, y'all have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I had tonight. That takes us on to item 5.1, presentations, there are none tonight. Item 5.2, Board, Commissioner, and Committee Appointments, there are none tonight. Item 6, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports, Mr. Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As Cory number one, did he leave already? He did, I think he left, was he out there, okay. Oh, he was with Bart, okay, well, he talked about our new communications director, I wanted to introduce Bart. Bart, if you could pop your head in here real quick. Bart, he's working right now. He's had a long illustrious career in the media, last nine or 10 of which has been in the Colorado Springs market. And we're fortunate enough that he's coming to help us out with communications and helping us to up our game relative to getting information out to our citizens. So we're really fortunate to have him and look forward to some of the things he'll be doing to help us out. So, thank you Bart, and welcome, welcome. The second thing I wanted to mention, just to get the information out, is on the 24th, coming up is our trunk-or-treat. And we really are trying to get the message out for the kids, that'll be the evening of Friday, October 24th. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, anybody else down the row? Nope. All right, Madam Clerk, anything?
I would just mention, I also sit on the Fountain Up Committee, and we are having the Oh My Gourd event in front of City Hall on Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. We'll have professional pumpkin carver Willie Two's here with us from Food Network, and then we'll have the street dance on from 5:00 to 9:00, featuring Exit West, right here in front of City Hall.
Okay.
That's this Saturday, the 18th.
18th, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. IT, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Rick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Went to VFW 6461 for a Purple Heart Trail Ceremony. There's a Purple Heart Trail that the United States is getting, and VFW 6461 was designated as a stop for that. I got to sit and listen to a Purple Heart recipient who lost his hand in Afghanistan. It was very moving, at least for me. But that was a great thing to go to. Budget meeting last week, we had a budget meeting here, the budget meeting is on YouTube. If you couldn't attend, please view it if you get a chance, and if you have feedback for us, give it to either us or the city staff. We would appreciate your feedback. And then reminder, Veterans Day Ceremony, the American Legion, the VFW, and the city are having a joint Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th, starting at 10:30 a.m. at the American Legion on Southmore. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Geek? Councilmember Estes? Nothing this evening. Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's with sad and my condolences to you. We have a long-term standing member in our community, Melvin Postowei, he was a Purple Heart recipient. He was a chaplain for the Purple Heart Chaper, he passed away recently. I wasn't able to attend his service, he's buried in our veterans cemetery. He was just a good man, and every time I interact with him, he always had a joke, and he was just always just friendly and just caring about this community. And so, I just want to make sure that he is highlighted and he's celebrated, and my prayers go out to him and his family.
Thank you, he, one of the most positive people I have ever met in my life. Never said a negative word. Yes, Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to first welcome Bart officially to the team, I'm looking forward to working with you. I wanted to, I know I sent an email, I just want to say officially or announce, just a special thanks to Shawna and staff for a wonderful budget session. We got everything done and got it done early, that never happens. And so, it's just really well-organized, great conversation, stayed on topic, so I just really appreciate that. And along the lines of finance, I just wanted to just mention, I know people with the government shutdown may be having, you know, their paychecks threatened, or they're not getting their paychecks. And so I just want to encourage you to reach out to your financial institution. Many banks and credit unions have programs in place to help individuals who are not receiving their paychecks. I know Navy Federal Credit Union, Int, USAA, to name a few that I'm aware of. So I would just encourage, you know, if you were having those sort of disruptions with your finances, you know, call your financial institution, give them an opportunity to work with you. You may be surprised what they can do, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Call your creditors too. Don't assume they know, right? So, yeah. All right, thank you very much. We had some, a really cool thing happen, last week, we had CDOT pick us to show a driverless car. Apparently, the least wanted job in CDOT is the person who drives that truck, they call the scorpion truck, behind the truck doing the work, because that's who's going to get hit. So nobody wants to take that job and get hurt, so they have come up with a driverless car, so that if somebody hits that, they won't be getting hurt. And so they did a demonstration here, just for driver safety, and for safety of people working on the road. So that was really cool to be part of that. Redemption Hill came down and did a great fall festival for the kids up at one of the parks, appreciate them doing that. And then the O'Brien Home Team did their Pumpkin Palooza last Saturday at Metcalf Park, and gave out hundreds and hundreds of pumpkins to kids. And so, a lot of fun things going on in the community, and that's really, really great to see. And one last announcement is, at the request of Abba, and who's on our engineering team... And one last announcement is, uh, at the request of Abba, and, uh, who's on our engineering team, she says, there's a public open house meeting will take place on October 23rd from four to six, right here at our Fountain City Hall, 116 South Main Street in the council chambers. It is to talk about the Fountain Safety Action Plan. The city has initiated a major endeavor to reduce transportation-related fatalities and serious inju- injuries through the development of a comprehensive safety action plan. Traffic crashes are persistent issue in Fountain with over 1,200, uh, so far in the past five years. We recognize the need to improve and are committed to addressing roadway safety concerns for our citizens. The safety plan will provide a framework for identifying and implementing key safety measures to make streets and roadways safer for all users, including pedestrian cyclist drivers and those using public transportation or mobility devices. Again, that open house is a public meeting on October 23rd from four to six p.m. right here in Fountain City Council Chambers. I know I attended the first one they had, they literally had maps out, you could take a sticky dot, a sticky note, and put a dot on the map for where you want to report, where you think the most crashes are, they're in Fountain. And, uh, this is not for potholes people, okay? It's for where you think we're having trouble with crashes, and they're going to gather all the data. And this is the first time Fountain has ever done it on their own. They usually do the countywide ones, so, um, it's pretty cool that we're just focusing just on our, our citizens and our, and our safety in this area. Okay, um, that takes us on to item seven, consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have item seven A and seven B on the consent agenda, agenda approval of the September 23rd city council members and resolution 25 dash zero four two. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember Estes?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carry.
Thank you. Item eight, old business, discussion of city council vacancy and process per city charter. Ms. Cornille?
Mayor and council, um, at the last meeting, September 23rd, um, you guys discussed about when to declare the vacancy for, um, uh, Ms. Deidra Duncan's position, and out of that information that was given and provided, um, I tried to compile the best that I could and take into pro- take into consideration the process, um, to be able to have it clearly communicated and schedule it ahead of the election. You can see the timeline on the screen up here, so if you were to declare the vacancy on October 28th, that would start the 15-day calendar per our charter for a deadline to submit the petitions, and then I'm just going to go down the, down the line there. Petitions would be available for picking up at the clerk's office on the 29th, election day is the 4th, returned positions on November 12th. Then I would verify those signatures, um, and then if, I just wanted to back up and point out something. If we declared the vacancy on November 4th, we wouldn't have any more information at that meeting, November 4th, than we would have at the meeting on October 28th. So by choosing October 28th, it gives us additional time for the clerk to verify the signatures and applicants to cure that petition, and then I would deliver the packets to the council, um, November 24th, no sooner than November 24th, which would then start the 15 calendar day per our charter for the appointment, which at that point, um, would be on December 9th. That being chosen, um, because the question was, will the, um, election be certified by the December 2nd meeting? And I reached out to the county clerk, um, because we coordinate the election with her, and they let me know that the election would be certified on November 26th, and if there was a mandatory recount, which we have seen in our city in the past, those, um, counts would be certified by December 5th. So by using this timeline, I feel, I taken all of the information from the last council meeting and put that into consideration the best that I could, um, allowing the newly appointed person to be sworn in with the newly elected people, and then, um, also allowing the, the newly appointed member to take part in taking the information to who would be the mayor pro tem, what committee appointments they would be on, um, by doing it that way. By choosing the, um, declaring it this October 28th allows those who are running for candidacy currently right now, an opportunity to know whether they, at election day, if they win or they don't win, if they would still like to put their name in the hat, still gives them that opportunity to do so. Also taking into account that the week of November 24th is Thanksgiving. So, all of those pieces and parts put together, this is the best scenario that I could come up with, taking everybody's information, um, from that last meeting and putting it into, um, something where I felt took that information and put the best opportu- opportunity and option out for newly, um, appointed and newly, um, elected. So this is just some, it's just a guideline information. Obviously, it's your choice. Um, again, if we choose to, um, uh, declare the vacancy November 4th, you won't have any additional information, so that's why I chose October 28th, giving the additional time down in the end for the petitions to cure and deliver to the council, to restart the timeline once that goes along at 15 days.
So just to clarify?
Yes.
Just to walk people through the meeting?
Yes.
So the only thing that's required to be done by our city charter at the very first meeting is choosing the mayor pro tem. So you get whoever is elected, sworn in.
Yes.
And then they take their seats.
Yes.
And then their first, um, action of duty would be to review the packets, hear from the candidates, and then the newly seated council on November 9th would choose their seventh member. And then that person would be sworn in immediately, come up and sit down with the council, and be able to participate in everything from the day, day one, first thing, choosing ma- helping me choose mayor pro tem, and different, and participate in the meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's a good compromise from what we were hearing. Uh, that would require us down a little further in the agenda to, um, under new business, to move the December 2nd meeting to December 9th.
Correct, and I added that in case you wanted to use this scenario, that was an option.
Right, but both those things have to.
But both have to happen, correct.
Fall in order, and, okay, so, let's have some discussion up here. What do people, thoughts and ideas on that? I think it's a good compromise between the, the two things that were out there. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I agree, it's a good compromise. Uh, all the new council will be sworn in on the first day, uh, we get everybody started together, so I'm okay with the, uh, the clerk's proposal.
And, and we'll do the, uh, pretty much like we did when we chose, uh, Councilmember Geek as a replacement. The packets will be given out ahead of time to whoever the newly elected person is, is going to be sworn in, and they will probably do an interview like we did before, and then instead of choosing someone and then coming back later and swearing a man, they would just be sworn in that night on the spot. Councilmember Geek, any thoughts?
No, I just think that having one person come alone on, is difficult because you don't have any partner to, to bounce things off of, and you guys have been really good to me and answered all my questions, but I think it would have been nice to have somebody with as wet behind, wet behind the ears as I was, but, but we're doing fine. I just think it would be nice for them to come on all together.
Okay, Councilmember Estes?
I agree with the plan that the new council, the newly elected person will be, you know, if it's a mayor or whoever, that they get to choose who they're going to be working with for the next two years.
Right, and then they know the results of the election that way too, and if somebody is, uh, it still gives them time after the election day to still pull a packet, right, um, right?
Correct.
Just keep in mind, November 11th is a holiday, so don't come down November 11th expecting to get a packet, because nobody will be here to give it to you. Right. Councilmember Hinton, I know you're going to get left out of it all.
I don't mind, but I agree, I agree with the schedule that Joni's worked hard to, uh, to put together, and I think this will make for a, um, a very, um, great team put together, and so, um, yeah, no, I like it, Joni, thank you so much for your hard work.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hersberg?
Yes, thank you. I know, um, you know, in a perfect world, I wanted to, to slow it down and wait a while, but since the last meeting, I did speak at length about logistics with Joni, and she kind of helped bring me up to speed logistically, how this makes sense. Also, given, uh, Councilmember Geek's experience, taking that into account, um, I, I would agree, it's, it's a fair compromise.
Okay. All right, anyone from the audience have any comments on this? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back up to the dais. And what would council like to do with this? Well, do you need a formal motion, or are we just telling you what to do?
No, no, I don't need a formal motion, just a discussion, and I will bring it back at the next meeting with a resolution to declare the vacancy at the October 28th meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, that takes us on to item nine A, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. There were none. Item nine B, consideration by the city council to reschedule the December 2nd, 2025 meeting to December 9th, 2025. And the reason we're doing that obviously is to accomplish what we just decided. Plus, Mr. Ricky, give a little bit more time to get back from, uh, Thanksgiving up north, huh? Alrighty, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve, or move to move our meeting from December 2nd, 2025 to December 9th, 2025.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carry.
That reminds me, Mr. Trainer, is there a way to cut the power to the, um, message board that's in front of the fire station, um, on Fountain Mesa? It's frozen. There, and it's frozen on the, um, second and the fourth Thursdays in November, December, they're not that day. The one in front of the other fire station on 85 is frozen on the VFW advertising the haunted house, yeah. And that's okay. I mean, they're getting lots of advertising out of it, but the other one's going to have it wrong for November and December. Okay.
Just have a quick question for Joni. So make sure I, I'm straight on this. What's the first day that the new, new electees get sworn in? Is that December?
The ninth.
The ni- is it?
The ninth.
So when do I, when do I have to be here?
You'll have to be here December 9th for the festivities, Mr. Hinton.
All right, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure. All right, thank you, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
But you don't get to vote?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
You're going to be out there.
I will be, I will be out in the audience.
All right, okay. Either that or you have to fight the new person for your seat, huh? All right, nine C, resolution number 25 dash zero four three, a resolution amend in the appropriation of the fiscal year FY 2025, budgeted funds. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, tonight I bring before you the next budget amendment for this year for 2025, and I will say, I apologize, we had a last-minute addition on Monday. I believe Scott sent an email out, and Joni provided updated spreadsheets for the Exhibit A tonight. Fortunately, that last-minute addition that we had to add is a net zero change to the general fund fund balance, so that's always good news. So this budget amendment that I bring before you tonight, city council adopted a budget for 2025 on November 12th, 24, and has previously amended the budget three different times already this year. Since then, we have identified additional revenues and some expenditures that were not included in the original 2025 budget. This amendment includes an increase in the general fund revenues, and those revenues are insurance proceeds and reimbursements from other outside agencies for various reasons, such as a roofing company that had to reimburse us for faulty shingles on one of the buildings that the city owns. The expenditures adjustments within the general fund include building repairs, uh, the final upfitting on the new ambulance that we received in February of this year, and some street maintenance repairs and equipment. See if I can get this to work. Bezy, there you go, thank you, sir. Um, this budget amendment also includes additional expenses out of the street capital improvement fund, and this is for the initial scheduling, inspection, and traffic control study, um, for the quiet zone that is planned at Indiana Avenue and Ohio at that new intersection there. So with that being said, I will go through Exhibit A here in just a second. It shows those individualized revenues and expenditures, but we're recommending approval by city council to amend the budget for 2025, and again, this is a best practice by governmental accounting standards to ensure that only the monies that council appropriates are spent. So with that, I will go into the actual amendment line items. So this is the general fund revenue, and I apologize that it's a little small. The biggest things that I would like to point out on here, we've got $70,000 coming in, um, from the ICSA program. They're actually going to front $500,000 payment for the transit ICSA that we've all been discussing. So I've worked with John Trulch on that, and about 70,000 of that is actually going to go into this year's revenues, and you'll see on the expenditure side, corresponding expenditures for prorated salaries for the transit manager, um, additional software and equipment, and then also, um, a support contract for that transit ICSA. $140,000 are coming in from the insurance proceeds from SIRS, and this is actually from an August 2024 hailstorm that we had. We were able to get all of the buildings evaluated and the money received from SIRS early this year, and since then, our building maintenance team has been able to go through and repair some of those damages from that storm. And then we've got $95,000 coming in from Juwi, which was a solar company. They actually paid us in November of 2023, uh, 2022, excuse me, for future road repairs out on Squirrel Creek from the damage that was caused from their vehicles and equipment heading out to build out the solar farm. So you'll see an offsetting expense there to repair that road, because now it's come to where we need to make those repairs. And then $70,000 from the hyphen X payment, and you'll notice that that is actually the remainder on September 23rd. Bob and Todd brought before you of $50,000 for Parks Equipment from the hyphen X money, and so this is the remainder of that $120,000 to now purchase a stormwater camera. So we've actually got $386,000 going into the general fund revenues, which is great. Um, Bezy, if you could go to the next slide, please. So on the expenditure side, I'm not going to talk about all of these, but those first three lines are the ICSA, um, personnel and equipment that we would need for that transit ICSA coming online. There's the almost $12,000 in the graphics and details for the ambulance that will actually come out of the public safety sales tax fund balance, just like we did with the purchase of the ambulance for the difference from the insurance proceeds. $95,000, which is that mill out in Crackville asphalt repair on Squirrel Creek from the Juwi money, and then 56,000, and, uh, excuse me, for the main liar, mainline crawler stormwater camera. And then those last few lines there, including the $106,000 at the bottom, those are actually all of the building repairs that we've had to do with the SIRS insurance money from the hailstorm in August of 2024. Bezy, if you could go to the last slide, please. And then, um, so you'll actually see at the bottom there, and I apologize again, it's kind of hard to read, that we've actually got expenditures going out of about 445,000, which is a net decrease in the inch, uh, in the unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of about $59,000. However, 12,000 of that will come from the public safety sales tax fund balance, so it's really only a reduction of about $47,000 in the general fund overall, which is great news, that we were able to fund most of these things through other revenues. And then the last piece, you'll see there's the street capital improvement fund, and that's where the $91,000 would be coming out for that traffic control study and the prep work for the Ohio and Indiana quiet zone improvements. So with that, I will open it up to questions from council.
Any questions from any council members? Okay. Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Please come up and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Connie Weisenhund. Um, Shawna, great job to you and your team on that budget meeting. That was awesome. I learned just so much. But could you explain to me, because I'm still learning, um, talk to me a little bit about 2018, seven years ago, um, funds coming back, and we're just dealing with them now, and then the 2022, three years ago, on, um, funds coming in. I just don't understand the, the difference in the years, and then, um, traffic control, so when they do a traffic study, isn't that, um, the people who need the traffic study pays out, and we don't, that, it sounded like we were paying for that? So just looking for some clarification, please, and thank you.
Sure, so I'll answer the first couple of questions you have, Connie, not a problem, and then I'll turn it over to Bob for the traffic control piece of that. Um, one clarifying question I have for you though is, what do you mean by? question I have for you, though, is what do you mean by the 2018?
So on your, one more, one more, um, okay, so reimbursement from the roofing company for faulty shingles that failed in 2018, that brought in 11,213, so seven years ago? So is there like a bunch of interest that comes with that, too? Or like, how come we're just seeing that now?
So it actually was that the shingles, my understanding from Craig, is that the shingles themselves failed in 2018, and we went after the roofing company, and we were just now reimbursed last year and this year, that we got part of the money last year and then part of the money this year for that, because it took us that long to get them to cover those faulty shingles. However, since then, that same roof was actually damaged in a hailstorm after that, and so our insurance actually covered those costs, so we were able to repair that roof before we received this reimbursement. And then as far as the November 2022 payment from the solar company, we knew going into that, when we received that payment, that we would not use that money within that same year. So what we actually did was we put it in, we call it in governmental accounting, a deferred revenue, which is really just a holding account, knowing that we would have to use that for future repairs. So we purposely set that money aside in a holding account, so that way it wouldn't get spent on anything else. And so now that the time has come that those repairs need to be made, we need to pull it out of that holding account and put it into our actual realized revenues for this year.
Okay.
Does that answer that part of it?
Thank you.
Okay.
I was like, what?
Yeah. And then as far as the traffic control piece, I'll let Bob answer those.
For the traffic control study for the Indiana quiet zone, the railroad mandates those studies, so they don't pay for it, because we're requesting to get a quiet zone, we have to pay for those studies.
Okay, yeah. I knew from my own experience that I would have to have paid for traffic studies. I was like, just curious. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Oh, wait, no, please, sir, no, sir, sir, please, come down to the microphone and push the, and state your name for the record, okay? All right, thank you. Well, we need to get it recorded and everything, so thank you.
Asking.
In your name, please?
More about what this camera is and what it will be doing.
Sir, could I get your name for the record, please? Could I get your name for the record, please? Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I'm actually gonna let Bob talk about the stormwater camera, because that's actually gonna be his piece of equipment.
So the stormwater camera system is a piece of equipment we've been trying to get for years now. We have, we current, the city of Fountain currently has no way of inspecting our stormwater systems. We've been relying on fountain sanitation over the past, since I've been here at least. And they are gracious enough to get that camera out to us when they have the ability to do so, and they are always pretty accommodating. But of course, we have to, we have to wait for them to be able to get out there. They utilize that system continually for their own, for their own infrastructure. Our stormwater system in the city is something that has not been maintained properly for many years. And one of the ways that we can find out our critical needs and be able to identify what needs to be repaired first is to be able to get down there and look at it. Right now, the only way to get down in there is to have a camera system. There's no way, of course, crawling through an 18-inch stormwater system, so we have to have a camera system that can go through there. Initially, I actually tried to buy a much cheaper system, what they call a push camera. Push cameras only work for storm drain and things like that, up to about six, six to 12 inches max. So I had to come back and reevaluate what I was doing. This system that we're looking at right now is one of the cheapest robot systems that I've been able to find nationwide. And so that's why we're purchasing that system, so we can actually start inspecting our stormwater and doing the necessary repairs we need to.
Thank you. All right, any other questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here to the dais. And council, what would you like to do with resolution 25-043? Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Bob, I want to clarify for the audience. We have some storm drains, storm lines, that are over 100 years old, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's many throughout the system that are anywhere, anywhere from 75 to 100 years old.
Yeah. So there is a definite need to inspect those, to make sure that those are clear. If they're not, we've gotta then come up with a plan to address how to get them clear or get them replaced, so that we can get the stormwater out of where it needs to go. We've got some people in Cumberland Green, which is a newer area, came to us with their house flooded, and we didn't have a inspection system to check the lines, to see where, who was at fault, what was wrong, why is it flooding in this area. This camera will help us answer those questions. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so now, what would you like to do with this, council? Councilmember Hersberg?
I move to approve resolution 25-043.
Okay, Councilmember Geek?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes us on to item nine D, report on the status of the water and electric funds. Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Dan Blankenship, utilities director. I'm gonna provide you with a report on the status of the water and electric funds this evening. I'm gonna try to talk about the funds without using as too many numbers. After my last presentation, I kind of walked away with a little bit of anxiety. But no, I was, I was really concerned that maybe I hadn't articulated well, and I went back and watched the meeting. But tonight, if I get too carried away with numbers, I'm a numbers person. Stop me anytime and ask for clarification, and I'll be happy to hopefully, hopefully provide a little bit of clarification. My, my presentation is, I've got several of, or I think four slides, that have some graphics on it. And what I'm gonna do is describe to you what you're looking at on the slide, and then try to explain to you what, what I'm trying to, the message I'm trying to convey with that slide. So Bezzie, if you could get me rolling here. I'm gonna talk about probably four different things this evening. I'm gonna talk about our operations and maintenance reserve, because it's a, it's a good financial indicator. It's also a major component of the requirements that we have to fulfill as part of our debt obligations. I'm gonna talk about the water fund stabilization plan, that's about a year and a half into existence. And then I'm gonna talk about the water fund, the current status of the water fund, kind of some of the things that have happened over the past five years in the water fund, and then the same thing with the electric fund. So starting off with, I'd like to kind of define what, what, how we use this term, O and M reserve. It's a, it's actually the, what do you have, what I'm showing in front of you, and unfortunately, you can only see half the bars that are supposed to be appearing there. So, but the, the O and M reserve is a requirement that we have with all of our bonds and loans. And the way that we're using this term in this presentation is in a way that it's defined by the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority. We have a loan that was taken out in 2014 that will not be paid off until 2044. So we will be using this term, and we use it to calculate our obligations and to see if we're in compliance with the obligations. It's when, when you talk about a reserve, you usually think about cash, but in this sense, it includes all of our current assets, less current liabilities. So the numbers that I'll be talking to you about don't just reflect cash, it reflects other assets, less liabilities. In the water fund, for 2024, our actual O and M reserve, as calculated by the state's methodology, was $3.2 million to the negative. And required reserve would be $1.8 million. So, so we've got a shortfall in the water fund of a little over $5 million. Fortunately, in order to comply with our bond covenants, the, the CWRPD and our bondholders look at a combined reserve. So we basically add together the water and electric reserve. In the electric fund, we have assets at the end of 2024 of just under 20 million, at 19.7, while the required reserve for the electric fund is only, or is not only, but quite a bit less than that, at about $6.6 million. So when we are able to, we're able to utilize funds within the electric fund to cover the waters portion, so that we're actually, for the first time since 2017, in compliance with the O and M reserve requirement. We, we came really close in 2023 to complying with that, but we made a significant amount of progress in 2024. And so our combined assets are equal to about 16.6 million, with the reserve requirement being 8.5. So the bottom, the bottom line there is, it's really good news. We, you saw the graphic on the cover sheet. We've been grappling with lemons, especially in the water fund, for some time. It really was the precursor to the, the water fund stabilization plan, and we're making progress there. But we're making progress on, in both utilities, in both funds, and we've made a significant enough progress that we're now in full compliance with our bond covenants. So I'll move on and talk about the water fund stabilization plan. And I'm gonna do that through this, this graphic in this particular, I'm gonna kind of describe how the water fund stabilization plan is progressing by using this graphic that shows the five-year history on the O and M reserve. What you're looking at there, unfortunately, we can see all the, the bars and the lines on this slide. The, the bars represent the, the each fiscal year for, from 2020 through 2024, of the actual reserve, O and M reserve in the electric fund is the orange bars, and the water fund is the blue bars. The center line is zero, so everything below the center line is a negative number, and everything above the center line is a positive number. The gray line that you see is our actual calculated O and M reserve, and the dotted line is the required amount. So you can see, once again, in 2023, we came very close to meeting it, and you can see in 2024, where, where we have significantly improved our position in our, our meeting it, more than meeting it, we're, we're exceeding it. But as far as the, the water fund stabilization plan, we really have two primary objectives. One is to eliminate the interfund payable in the water fund that's to the electric fund. We cannot basically run a, a negative balance in a, in a fund. And so in order to balance the water fund, we have a payable from the, the water fund to the electric fund. And so the, the first primary objective of the plan is to eliminate that payable. And then the second objective is to build a cash reserve in the water fund. As you can see, we have made progress in the water fund. We're, those, those blue bars generally are getting shorter from, from year to year, as we move from 2020 to, to 2024. Part of that is attributable to the water fund stabilization plan, which was retroactively implemented in fiscal year 2023. The council approved it in March of 2024, but it actually called for that implementation to take place in fiscal year 2023. And so the change from 2022 to 2023, we reduced that deficit in the water fund by a couple million dollars. And then from during fiscal year 23, or I'm sorry, during fiscal year 24, we, we, we reduced those bar, that bar, or the, the negative amount in the water fund by just under another million dollars. So to, to eliminate the, the interfund payable from the, the water fund to the electric fund, over this basically five-year period, we've gone from the, the peak of 8.7 million dollars, down to what is effectively, at this point in time, about 1.5 million dollars. So we made significant progress, not only with the water fund stabilization plan, but with other actions that we've taken within the management of, of the water fund. Our current trends indicate that we will probably eliminate the interfund payable in 2027, and we will establish cash reserve approximately equal to three months of operating expenses in the water fund by 2030. So we're looking at still five more years to meet the objectives of the water fund stabilization plan. And overall, it'll be about a three-year endeavor. And, but we're basically going, like I said, from, we hit, at rock bottom, we were at about 8.7 million dollars in the interfund payable. In order to have three months of reserve in the water fund, we'd need about a little over $3 million. So that's, that's about a $12 million swing. And, and I think a $12 million swing over an eight-year period is, is probably, maybe even a little on the aggressive side. One of the things that I will say, and we'll take a look at as I talk about the water fund, is the water fund's primary source of revenue is water rates. We, and water rates are, or water revenues are driven by basically water consumption. And so these projections that I've given you on timeframes are tied to what I would consider normal water consumption. And, and I'll talk a little bit about that, because we've seen some pretty significant changes in, in our water consumption patterns. Bezzie, can you can, okay. So basically, what we have up here is, I'm, I've got three things that I'm showing you. Our water revenue and our water expenses, the, the blue line is the revenue, that's the income, and the orange line is the expenses, that's what, what we spend. And then the bottom bars, those are the actual water consumption over that period of time, and there is a dashed line that run across the top of those water bars. And it's real, it's not real easy to see, but there is, that dashed line is, is declining. And, and so you, when you look at the, a lot of times when you look at a graph like this, you try to be able to draw some conclusions. And it's really difficult in the water revenue versus expense without pulling back the curtain and understanding what's driving those. One of the factors is that we have, we're, we're taking each year at a time, and so timing plays, plays into, into what we're seeing. And then also, I think that a critical point here is, you know, I'm talking about cash. When you, when we have a budget presentation, or we look at the budget, or we look at our annual certified financial report, there's a lot more to accounting than, than just the cash and the assets. But in the utility business, and that's essentially what, what we have, is a municipally owned business, enterprise, you know, we, we deal in cash. Our vendors, our employees, they, they won't take payment in pipes, or, or valves, or lines, or poles. And even if they did, that would become problematic, because then we couldn't continue to provide service if we were making payment with our assets. So we, we live in a cash world. And so what we look at is, and, and our approach is, is to bring in more cash than we spend on an annual basis. And you look at this graph, you're saying, oh, gosh, I don't know, you do it some of the time, you don't do it some of the time. But what we also work on is a continuum of time. And with the accounting, we're, we're taking it in chunks of years. So, so we're dealing with- So, so we're dealing with, with timing. Just to start with the good news. In 2024, the operational net in the water fund was a plus $1 million. That means in 2024, we took in a million dollars more than we spent. There's two things that we can attribute to that. I said as the operational net, that's basically how we're managing our operations. And also as the water fund stabilization plan, the council has waived the payment in lieu of taxes from the water fund to, or from the water fund to the general fund. That, both were about equal and at about a half a million dollars apiece. But when you look at the, the variation in the, in the history of the, the water fund, you see some peaks like in 2021. And that's a result of a, of a prepayment of connection fees by Aspen Ranch. We have a limited number of water connections. So normally they would have purchased those water connections over time and you'd have seen that, that revenue flatten out. But we had a peak there that, that puts things kind of out of kilter, at least for how it's being presented. In 2022, we had a little, we started to see our drop in consumption, which was unexpected. Plus we had an uptick in capital expenditures. Typically in the water fund, if we have capital expenditures, it's expenditures that we will get reimbursed either through a grant or through our environmental services agreement with the air force. And in this case, we had expenditures that occurred in 2022 that we didn't get reimbursed for until 2023. So you see the, the expenditure line kind of jump up above the, the revenue line. That's because of a, of a timing issue. And then in 2024, you see both lines start to go up rather steeply. And that's also an uptick in capital expenditures. But we also have been receiving the reimbursements with that. And that was primarily associated with the 30-inch pipeline that we put in. So what you, what you don't see is, you see this or kind of a little bit of erratic presentation. But what you don't see is, is a, what we've, what we're doing with our operating expenses. In 2020, our operating expenses in the water fund were 10.3 million dollars. In 2024, our operating expenses were 9.9 million dollars. So over that four-year period, we reduced our actual reduction of operating expenses by $420,000 annually. Also during that period, there was a little bit of inflation. In fact, when you look at the Bureau Labor Statistics from 2020 to 2024, the, the Consumer Price Index increased by 21% during that period. So not only did we reduce our actual expenditures, our costs, you know, generally went up about 21%. So if you would, if you would apply that inflation factor to our expenses, you would have expected that, that in 2024, our operational costs would have been about 12.5 million dollars just based on inflating the, the 2020 baseline by the CPI. So when you, when you compare that to where we're actually at, we've really, for all practical purposes, reduced our operating costs in the water fund by about 2.6 million dollars per year. And that's why you see on that last slide, that's why you saw improvement. That's why you see that blue bars getting smaller and smaller each year, even before the water fund stabilization plan. So it's really, the, the water fund is moving in a positive direction because of the water fund stabilization plan combined with how we are managing the expenditures in the water fund. And we're doing this, Bezzie, yeah, thanks for going over. And, and we're doing this during a time when we're seeing a reduction in, in water consumption. There's from 2020 to 2024, that represents a reduction of 6.3%. Things get even more bleak in 2025. At this, this year, I have projected that we're going to be down from the 2020 baseline just slightly less than 14% in our water consumption. And that, that has a, that has a very significant impact on our, our revenue. And so that's what I'll address now is, how are we doing in 2025 with our rate performance? As you know, in March or in February, you approved a 9% rate increase in the water, water rates. And that went effect on March 1st. At this point in time, through the, the first three quarters of the year, I've taken that information and I projected that our year-end rate revenue will be about 9.5 million dollars. We budgeted 10.3 million dollars. So that's, that's about an $830,000 shortfall. The estimated revenue generated by the 9% increase is equal to about 760,000. So without the increase, we would be, I would be projecting that we would be coming in about 1.6 million dollars below our budgeted revenue amount. Pretty significant amount, very difficult to, to, to recover from that. You know, we, we typically, we, we manage our expenses. We watch our, our revenues. But as you can see, with the level of cost reductions or expense reductions that we've already taken, it becomes a lot harder to tighten the belt further than we have, even though we continue to, to do so. We do have what I'll call our bacon saver. And this year, we have received two PFAS settlement payments that are about $750,000. We originally had hoped to apply those, that $750,000 directly to the, to, to reduce or down the inter-fund payable. But as it turns out, it's likely that we're going to have to just use that $750,000 to, to maintain a positive year-end position in the water fund. Before I go on to the electric fund, any questions on the water fund?
Any questions or council member Rick?
Could you go back, Bezzie, could you go back to the, yeah, this one? So the electric reserve is 19.7 million dollars as of 2024. Is that correct?
The, but, yes, that is correct, but it is assets. It's our current assets less our current liabilities. So there are, it's not just cash. I will cover as part of the electric, my presentation on the electric fund, I will cover our cash position in there. But the 19.7, technically in accordance with the definition from the state, we have those assets and it's considered O and M reserve.
Okay. Does that 19.7 include what the water fund owes the electric fund? Or is there an amount on top of it?
Yes, that is, that is a current asset. The inter-fund payable is a, is a asset and it is a, is a receivable.
Okay.
So yes, it's part of the calculation.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from anybody up here? Okay.
And I'm trying really hard also to use the appropriate financial terminology. And I'm, and I get, I get a lot of lessons because sometimes I, I don't.
Okay. I was going to ask if there was any questions on this portion of the presentation from the audience before we go on to the next part. Because that's a lot of information to absorb at once.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Connie Weisenhund. Hi, Dan.
Hi, Connie.
Can you explain to me? I'm just trying to understand. How will we be 14% down on water consumption with the new builds and new water connections? Don't we have like, I don't know, 3,000 new homes in one section being built and, no?
We do, we, we have, we have a very small amount of growth within our service area. The City of Fountain Water Utility does not serve the entire City of Fountain city limits. Whitefield Water and Sand and Security Water and Sand, they have areas within the, the city that they serve. And probably some of the bigger developments that have occurred have occurred within their service area. So we have not had what I would consider significant growth. Probably as far as the number of taps, maybe, maybe a percent is, is all we've, we've grown on, on about an annual basis. So it's essentially, we're, we're going to initiate an outreach program. And our first step in that outreach program is trying to get an understanding of what people think about the water and why they are using it or not using it. But the bottom line is, is that we're, we're, we're seeing a significant decrease in use. Now, I believe that part of that in 2025 is certainly weather related. Because myself, there were multiple times that I turned off my own personal irrigation system and I, I'm on the fountain water system. And I think that that was probably true of others because we just got rains in, in certain frequencies that enabled the, the lawns and landscapes to, to flourish. So I think, I think a part of that is environmental. I think maybe a part of it is maybe concerned with the, the water. But we want to kind of flush that out and so that we can better manage, understand and manage that.
Thank you. My, my second question, Dan, is with the increase for the taxes, so was that 9%, does that not help us get that edge and close that gap a little bit on what we're not going to make on the budget for the water? And then I guess also, I'll just ask it and then you can take me into it. So using the electricity reserve to keep the water, where it's supposed to be with the bond. So later on, then the water will pay that back to the electricity?
Okay, I'll start with, I'll start with your latter one and move to your, your other one. Yeah, we're basically setting aside money within the electric fund to meet the obligation of the full utility. And so it is, you know, it's in the best interest of both groups of rate pairs in both utilities to, to, to not be in that situation. It's to properly operate the, the independent utilities. They should be fully financially independent. And then also we have a fair amount of, maybe 40-plus percent of our customers are located, of electric customers are located outside of our water service area. So they're electric customers only. So we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate to use funding from them to support other customers. So we're, we're in the process of correcting that. But that's not a situation that's unique to Fountain. That's a, it is very common that water utilities are underfunded. And, and that is, that's a pretty common situation in many, in many municipalities. As for what you referred to as a tax was actually a rate increase. And that was a 9% increase basically across the board to our water rates that went into effect on March 1st. And based on the, the revenues that we've received through the first three months of the year, I went in and did some calculations. And I projected that that 9% rate increase will equate to about $760,000 of revenue this year. If we did not have that $760,000 in revenue, our, our shortfall, the difference between actual revenue, projected revenue and budget would be about 1.6.
Okay.
But with that 760, I'm anticipating or projecting that our shortfall will be about 830.
Also, my last question, sorry. You compared Fountain to some other places in regards to inflation. And I just wondered, is that realistic? Because I think that it's just a different kind of city compared to Manatee Springs, compared to Pueblo, compared to... So I just wondered what your thoughts really were coming from on that.
Yeah, I use the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which is a federal agency that does nationwide statistics. And I use the, the Consumer Price Index for the, the, I used it, I ran actually a couple of them. I ran the West because they do four different regions in the United States. But then they also have municipal indexes for major cities. And I also ran the, the Denver Index. And once again, that's national information. It's very, I guess it's, it's very highly reliable information. And like I said, I try, I always try to take a conservative approach. I, I think that probably there may be others that would argue that 21% inflation from 2020 through 2024, from the beginning of 2020 through the end of 2024, might be a low number. And in certain sectors, it, it is a low number. So I always try to, to be very conservative and not overinflate or, you know, try to overembellish those, those numbers. I try to use something that is very defensible. You're welcome.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience that has a question or comment? Please come down and state your name for the record. Push the middle button. I don't, oh, there it goes, okay.
My question is, how will this shortfall affect the retention? Is it the retention pond? Is that what we call it? Or the treatment pond that we have?
Yeah, the, it, it won't have, it has, the, these numbers have, at this point in time, have had no effect on the level of service that we are providing. We have been able to maintain a very reliable level of service and providing a quality level of service and on the water, on the water side in compliance with all national drinking water standards. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line for us. That we're going to, we're going to continue to do that. We're trying to, with these numbers, we're trying to improve our financial situation or, or in the water fund and not be reliant or having to basically hold money in the electric fund to meet the obligations of both utilities. So it's really a financial, it's, it's a financial thing. It has had no impact on our level of service.
Can I maybe add one more thing? Are you referring to the reservoirs that we've talked about building for future growth? Okay. Can you maybe, because that's a great question. It really, it's separate.
Yeah. The, we, we have in, in about 2008, the, the, the city through the water fund purchased property on the southwest, southwest side of town. And it was some reclaimed aggregate pits with the intent that someday that we could convert those pits into water storage. We have water rights in Fountain Creek. And we could then pump those from Fountain Creek up into the water storage. Then we would have to build a water treatment plant to treat that. We've, we got a grant from the, an ARPA grant through El Paso County, a little over $2 million. And we have been doing preliminary, we did initial studies and preliminary design. And in order to, to build a project that would convert all of our remaining water rights into treated water capacity, which would then give us the, the ability to serve about another 5,500 single-family equivalents, will cost about $100 million. And from my perspective, what that does is that creates, creates capacity that would be available for new growth. And in my mind, that in our system that we have right now, we have more than adequate capacity to serve our existing customers. Now, if we were to, say, go a traditional, what I would say, a traditional utility route, we would go out and we would issue debt to, to build something like that. And then as development would occur, they would then pay the, pay connection fees, which would ultimately retire that debt. But in the meantime, if development doesn't occur as fast as it was projected to occur, we still have to make that payment. And when I say we, I'm talking about our existing customers. So it puts a risk and a burden on our existing customers that I don't think is appropriate to do. Now, we, we have, like I say, we've Now, we, we've, we have, like I say, we've got through preliminary design. We have been talking to potential investors. We've talked to developers. It's just $100 million is, is a lot of money to invest. And the development community has more or less indicated that they're not willing to take the risk, but they're more than happy to have our existing customers take the risk.
Right.
Which I, which I, that's when I stand up and say, no, I don't think that that's, that's the appropriate thing to do.
Well, a couple of meetings ago, or maybe it was a month ago, it was suggested that some of this intergovernmental funds that the city of Fountain is receiving would go towards the utilities. Do you remember that remark?
That was a suggestion that I made, that maybe we have a policy discussion when the money, when the NICS council is seated, that takes some of that money, a certain percentage of it, and start using it to reduce the debt that the utilities has or, or just debt for the city in general. That hasn't been a formal discussion yet. That was something I threw out as an idea.
Yes. So is, would that help with this? Or is this intergovernmental agency lucrative enough now to do that?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with exactly the, the current status of the, the IGSA and what the, the potential revenues from that are. But once again, I mean, there, anything will help with correcting our existing financial situation in the, in the water fund. Like I say, every, every pebble counts because pretty soon you get a stack of pebbles, it starts to become, you know. So, so we're, we're counting, we're counting pennies. But as far as the, like the, 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 the water treatment solution for new development, I don't think we would come anywhere close to getting there with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please come down and state your name for the record. Can you, or do you need someone to bring the mic to you? Would that be easier for you? Okay, Mr. Linder, I said, would it be easier if someone brought the mic to you tonight? Or are you okay to stand? Thank you.
Dan Blanketship's a high, a true professional. And what I learned a lot from what Dan said, so I appreciate what you've been saying. But I've been sitting here and I've been wanting, I've been trying to get someone's attention through this whole meeting. I, I don't know if it's only me, but I can't hear a word you're saying, really any of yous. Dan Blanketship was about the loudest that I heard. He was loud, I heard his words. Everybody else here tonight, I can't hear. And I don't know why, you know, I know you got these microphones for us and everything. But another thing, who in the world can read all these little itty bitty things here? I, you know, I can't hear and now I can't see. So somewhere along the line can, I mean, you got all this space on this screen. Can't we get these numbers out so we can see them more? You know, just for the future, okay? That's, I, you know, I was sitting here, I'm really trying to listen. I couldn't hear a thing you said, but Dan, you were pretty loud, so I really appreciate. I just wanted to get that out, that if I'm the only one, I'm sorry, but I, I can't hear a thing. I can't see a thing, so whatever. Thank you, Mayor.
We would, we would be happy to email you the slides from tonight so you can look at them on your own computer and make them larger. So would you like the slides emailed to you?
Sure.
Okay, Scott, Dan, can we get that emailed to him? And then Joni, do we have another set of the? So if you'd like to borrow this set of? Okay, thank you. Well, anybody else in the audience that has difficulties hearing? Sometimes it's the different tones of people's voices. You can hear better than others' lower tones and high tones. We do have a new projector budgeted, right?
Yes, we do. We do have, but the sound has just not been that loud. I was just doing some hand signals back there earlier to get an idea. Some reason our sound just seems quieter today, Joe.
I don't know when the new projector's coming, but until it does, if people are showing slides, can they please come in and try the colors out on this projector and not just your computer? Because there's a lot of times the last few meetings where we've had, can't see the color and see the full presentation. So I think if we could just get IT to maybe take a little extra time to check them and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. No, that's, that's my bad. That's, we, I should have, I should have been in here yesterday checking this stuff and adjusting color. So we will certainly, going forward, we will certainly make sure that we come in and, and do some pre, pre-testing and, and make our presentations colors pop because they are, they're, they're, they are difficult to see and read.
Yeah, and cause we can see them just fine on our, on our screens up here. It's, it's the projector, right? And, and do we have any idea when the new one's coming? I know it's in the new budget, but that could be December of 2020, you know.
Yes, ma'am, we'll take a look at the projector and see if there's any adjustment to the settings we can make before then.
Thinking if the people just check their slides in general and they can kind of see what they're, they're doing. So, okay, thank you. What's that? Dark colors, yeah, cause, yeah, okay. Is there any other questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Please come down and state your name for the record.
George Gillum, and yes, I've had difficulty hearing this whole meeting. It's like your guys' sound system.
Next time, guys, get our attention, okay? Just wave back there when, you know, ears and stuff, okay?
It's like your sound system's not up.
Did you have another comment to say? Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, with that, I will bring it back up here. Dan, you were not done.
No, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and cover the electric fund. And really what, what you're gonna hear now is the story between the haves and the have-nots. The, the water fund and the water utility has historically been the have-nots and the electric fund is the, is the haves. And once again, that is very consistent based on my experience throughout the country of, of municipal utilities. Electric utilities just tend to be a lot more lucrative than, than water utilities. Looking at the, at the five-year, at the five-year history of our electric fund, the, the first thing that I would like to point out is in 2024, we did very well in the electric fund. Our net was $6.8 million. That means we brought in $6.8 million than we spent in, in 2024. Part of that was the Water Fund Stabilization Plan waived the, the pilt, the payment in lieu of taxes from the electric fund to the, to the general fund in 2024. And that was to help with offsetting some of the money that was being held by the water, the electric fund on behalf of, of the general fund. In fact, that, that was a, about one point, waiving that pilt contributed about 1.5, a little over 1.5 million to that $6.8 million net. When you look at, at these numbers and, and these graphs, there's, it's, there's a lot more consistency. And what you see is you see expenditures which are in the orange and revenues in the blue. You see expenditures declining and you see revenues increasing. The, the revenue increases are primarily a function of rate increases that occurred in 2020. In 2021, there was a 4% increase in each of those years. And that was part of a, a study that was performed. Actually, actually the rate increases were 21 and 22. I'm sorry about that, I corrected that. The rate study was completed in 2020 and it, it identified the need to increase rates at 4% for five, five continuous years. The primary reason for those rate increases was to fund a second interconnection and transmission extension to our electric distribution system. Currently, we have a single connection to the bulk transmission system. And so for long-term reliability, the need for the second interconnection and transmission extension is critically important to our, our electric system. We, as far as, you know, one of the things you don't see there is our change in annual operating expenses. Like in water, we have been very, we've been very, I guess, careful about how we spend our money. In 2020, our operating expenses were $27 million. In 2024, our operating expenses were just slightly less than $28 million. Unlike the water fund where we reduced our actual expenditures in the electric fund, we were unable to do that because we have a significant amount of our expenditure in the electric fund is associated with the purchase of, of power, wholesale, wholesale power. But if you once again look at inflation from 2020 to 2024, we are, we, we would have expected that our inflation-adjusted operational expenses to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $32.7 million, which is that, which is actually $4.7 million more than our actual operating expenses in 2024. So once again, when you take into that consideration, the inflation, we are still performing the services and providing, providing the service while managing our expenses to an absolute, you know, minimum, even taking into consider the, the inflationary aspects. With respect to the electric cash, the unrestricted cash balance in the electric fund at the end of 2024 was $11.8 million. That $11.8 million, 4.1 of it is just cash. 6.7 is committed cash or reserve. That's essentially the 6.7 million of committed cash reserve is equal to three months of operating expenses. And there's also $1.1 million set aside in the committed cash for system improvements and substation improvements that was part of the, the system extension collections that we've made over the years. I talked about the, the rate study and that the, that the rate study was primarily for the second interconnection and that the council approved the first two steps of that, those increases pending further development of the project, of which we are still working with Colorado Springs Utilities. And now we have a new player in the transmission in our area called the Southwest Power Pool. That's the RTO that we talked about at the, at the budget meeting a week ago. So as far as the electric unrestricted cash balance, the $11.8 million, I believe that needs to be retained for those improvements, including that very critical second interconnection and transmission extension. That covers the, the, the electric fund. But typically I get questions about where are we at with our long-term debt? So I want to cover that real quickly. On the water, in the water fund, at the end of 2024, our long-term debt was, the principal was $44.9 million. Our annual payment is approximately $3.5 million. And if you remember back, you know, we're, we're now, our primary source of income on the water fund, it, we're, this, this year was going to be less than $10 million and our, our debt payment is 3.5. So that's a pretty significant percentage of our, our annual income. On the electric side, we don't, we've, we've been fortunate to be able to cash fund most capital improvements throughout the years. And so the balance of long-term debt for the electric fund is 7.8 million and the annual payment on that is $817,000. The electric debt will continue until 2039. The water debt continues until 2044. So when I say long-term debt, I mean, long-term debt. I mean, that's, 2044 is 19 years from now. So we're gonna have that, that, those payments for quite some time. And that's another reason why I'm reluctant to add additional debt to what we already have. The next step on the Water Fund Stabilization Plan, we will be coming back to you, or I'll be coming back to you in two weeks with a recommendation to amend that plan. We, the, the original plan was, was pretty complex. We had some not necessarily intended outcomes, although it is being implemented exactly how it was written. We believe that it can be simplified so that we, our first priority is to eliminate the interfund payable from water to electric. And the second priority is clearly to build the committed cash reserve of three months of operating expenses. I've worked with, with Shawna and the finance staff and, and Catherine on my staff and, and we believe that we have a, a resolution that is much simpler and that will ensure that we meet the, those objectives. I want to thank you for your time this evening. I know I've taken a lot of it. I know I've talked a lot about numbers. But I think it's really important for everyone to hear that, that we're all working hard to keep our costs down. And I'm not just talking about the, the staff in utilities. I'm talking about the staff in the general government that supports utilities, finance, tech services, human resources, our attorney's office, our city manager's office. All of these are support services that enable us to actually, in the utilities department, to provide the electric and water services to this community. And, and we've all been working hard. The, the examples that I've shared with you this evening of the reduced costs, managing expenses, those are all across the board, not only in the utility department, but all across the board in the city. And, and in the meantime, we continue to provide reliable and high-quality utility services. I would be remiss to, though, to not mention that we could do none of this without the support of the city council, of which I am very grateful of your continuous and unwavering support for what we're doing to serve this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna lean really close. Can y'all hear now? Okay, all right, is there any comments or questions from anyone on the council up here? Councilmember Hinton.
So Dan, thank you for, yeah, yeah, can you guys hear me? Thank you for the presentation, Dan. I really appreciate it. I know I was one of those guys at, at the budget meeting, like, woo, it's a lot to take in. But I, as I was sitting here and, and listening to your presentation, and Scott, maybe this is just something that's on the topic for later. Maybe we take BART and use this as a communication kind of deal. The day in the life of utilities, like, what does that look like? And simplify that for our ratepayers so they can have an understanding. Cause it is a lot to take in and just at M1 meeting when it comes to our, our water or electric. And these are big numbers, right? And I, and I'm sure that our ratepayers have some concerns over that. And, you know, what can we do to conserve? And I know that, I know water for you, conserving water isn't, isn't great for the city. It's a double-edged sword, you know? It's great for our ratepayers, they get, they get the, the water that comes for their, for their grass and they don't have to utilize their irrigation sprinkler system. But also, you know, it's important for us as moving forward and, and moving Fountain forward that, that utilities is, is a business. And we have to treat it as such. And so I, I really appreciate all the information you're giving and, and maybe that's something in the future, Scott, that we can kind of put as a, the day in the life. I don't know what that looks like. I just came up with, yeah, no worries.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion. I think that's a very good one.
I, I went out with an electric guys one day. I was exhausted after two hours. Yeah, I mean, oh my goodness, the things I learned. Okay, anybody else on council have any questions or comments? Dan, this is so thorough. And this is very confusing to a lot of people because this is a very different way of doing business than how we've done business in the city of Fountain in the past. It's always kind of been electric and, oh, don't worry about electric this year, water will balance it out, you know, and vice versa. And so what we're, what we're really, really made a commitment to is making each fund independent, on its own, stand on its own legs. And that's very different and very, very complicated. And believe it or not, you've made it fairly simple in your explanation. But, but it looks, it just looks awkward when you're going through the phases. When you change anything in the way you're doing business, it, it can look scary and, and wrong or somebody did something wrong in the past. And that isn't the case. It's just, it's a different way of doing business and banks and bond companies are expecting different things than they did 30, 40 years ago. And, and we just changed the way we, way we do it too. Okay, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to the audience, okay? So, all right, is there any last questions or comments from anybody besides Connie in the audience? We're gonna let somebody else go first, Connie, okay? All right, anybody else? Or anybody else? Okay, okay. Not related to water? Okay, all right. Anybody else with something? Okay, please come down and state your name for the record. I feel like I'm shouting at you all, so I apologize.
Brittany Maris. Dan, thank you so much for that thorough explanation. I do appreciate what councilmember Frederick had said, that a day in the life, I think, would be really educational for a lot of our citizens, especially our young voters, our young individuals like myself who are trying to become more involved with government. I also appreciate how... I also have a question in regards to... I know we have some concerns about the next fiscal year, about how we... Especially with our water. I know electric, it seems like we're doing great. And I also appreciate the two independent stance of that. As an Indigenous woman, I'm all about water conservation. Like you said, it is a double-edged sword. And I'm learning, too. Of course, this is a business. And I've grown up here all my life as well. And so I want to support my government. So with that being said, I guess my concerns for like 2025 and even the next five years, what are some things that we should be looking at as... How do I see it? Like, a Fountain citizen paying our bills? I mean, would I be more concerned like Colorado Springs Utilities did, like their surcharges during like five and eight? I mean, I know you mentioned some surveys that could potentially go out, and I think that's really great to get that feedback. But what do you foresee in our future, especially with electric? I know you talked in great deal with water, but I'm curious about your thoughts on electric.
On the electric side, we are looking at the possibility of modernizing our rates to ensure that one customer classification doesn't adversely impact another customer classification. So the City of Colorado Springs recently did what they called Energy Wise Rates, which is a time of use. But they've... The way I understand it is they are basically applying that across the board to all of their customers and at least all of their residential customers. What we're looking at is we have some residential customers who are what I'll call high-demand users. They may have... What they do is they create a much more concentrated, higher load on our distribution system than what was anticipated would occur when the system was designed and built. Most customers, probably 90-some percent of our residential customers, put a typical load on the system. And so we don't see any need to address that. But those who put a high demand during peak periods could create adverse implications to the system that ultimately cost everybody. And so in that situation, what our approach would be, or what my contemplated approach would be, was to do a time of use for only those high-demand customers and then set up a rate structure. We don't want to get more... We don't need to get more money from those customers. We just want them not to harm our system during the peak hours. So we want to send them a price signal that gets them to maybe change their patterns and move some of the load that they can. Obviously, no one's gonna go home at 4:00 and turn off their air conditioner or not cook dinner. They're gonna do those things. But they may have other things that they have connected to the system that they can do off-peak. And so I would... My vision is to design a rate structure that at the end of the day, they wouldn't pay any different if they choose to take those heavy loads and move them off of the peak period. And that protects the system, and it protects everybody's interest. And it would only impact those small number of residential customers that have those high impacts. And we're actually working on a study to do that. We're also looking at a rate that if someone wanted to come in, say, for an electric vehicle and have a commercial charging station. Because there's certain characteristics of those loads that don't really fit into our existing rate structures. And our rate structures are always designed to be equitable so that we're basically charging those who create the impacts or create the charge. We're recovering that from that customer group. Because we're a nonprofit, and so we're a cost of service. And we try to spread those costs as equitably as we possibly can. It's not exact, and we do it in a transparent manner. We do this, and it's always open to the public. And anyone who's wanting to come to my office and sit down and talk through that stuff, it may take a few times to kind of start wrapping your head around it because it is, it's a very complex business. I've been in this... I've been in it for almost 40 years now. And it's just... It's a lot to understand and to wrap your head around. But I'm always open to anyone who wants to come in and visit with me, whatever amount of time it takes to, you know, answer questions and explain things. But I adopted, and I've really kind of created this philosophy, but I adopted this approach many, many years ago, is that I always ask myself when I'm doing something, and I tell my staff, we need to ask ourselves, are we doing what's in the best interest of our collective customers? And if the answer is yes, then we should proceed. And if the answer is no, then we need to reevaluate what we're doing. Because we're here for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to serve our community customers.
Thank you so much for explaining your thought process to me, Dan. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Brittany.
And Dan, some of those things you mentioned, time of use for the larger users, they could, like their electric car, they can put a timer on, right? So it doesn't charge... They can plug it in when they get home.
Right.
But then it wouldn't turn the charger on until like 2:00 in the morning or something, so, yeah.
That is correct. That is correct. We really believe that it's that these high-demand users can modify their behaviors with minimal efforts. And we're... But we're in the process of doing, I guess, research and investigation. And it's something that if we decide that we think that it's important to move forward, it's in the best interest of the whole customer, all of our customers, then we'll go through a public process to make sure that people understand what our thought process is behind our proposals.
Thank you. That's not a discussion we've had at all. You're just throwing out your wild thought process there.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Anybody else besides Connie? I know you're there. All right. All right. And do we have anybody online that's typed any comments or anything on tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, Connie, please come down and state your name for the record.
Connie Wyson-Hunt, again. Dan, thank you for your time and all of your education and everything. I'm gonna piggyback off of what Fred said. And I think that it is really, really important that now that we have a new communication guide, to kind of get it out there. And I think the one thing that I hear people who come to me for assistance or to help them is that they don't understand that Fountain Utilities, even though it says Fountain Utilities, is its own entity, its own business. And they're creating their own revenue, and they're doing their own thing. Like Black Hills Energy is like a separate thing. And so I think that that is a stigma or perception that Fountain Utilities is like part of Fountain. I'm not sure if I'm getting that out. But I think that it'll be good to kind of educate people on that a little bit more so that there's not a misunderstanding. So thanks for your time. Did I make sense on that?
You know, it's really kind of a hybrid because the utility, the electric utility and the water utility, which are separated financially from the general fund, they are enterprises, but they're municipally-owned enterprise, municipally-owned business. And that's in accordance with the state constitution. So the City of Fountain does own the utility. I do work for the City of Fountain. But from an accounting perspective, we are separate. And so it is a different model than a co-op like Mountain View or like Black Hills. And so it's just a little bit different model.
Well, not-for-profit.
Yeah, and it is not... Yeah, as a co-op, some municipals are not-for-profit, where investor-owned like XL Energy or Black Hills is for-profit.
Right, right, okay. All righty. And Mr. Bledsoe's list is getting longer and longer every time we come up. Yeah, but he'll get there. Keep the ideas coming, right? Because we want better communication. All right, so anybody else in the audience? Last chance. Okay? Does it have to do with the water and electric?
Not the water, I'm sorry.
Electric?
No, it's about Mr. Postalweight and Veterans Day.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, we're only taking comments for this, not for anything else. It's to keep the meeting moving along. We're just making... Taking comments on the item on the agenda right at the moment.
Okay, so you don't want me to...
No, no. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, not right now. Yeah, okay? All right. And we did announce about Mr. Postalweight passing away, and we did announce about Veterans Day, so... At the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I have a vision, if you're interested.
Okay.
And if you're not, okay.
Thank you. All righty. All right, Mr. Blankenship. Anybody last comments up here? Yes?
Yeah, Dan, I just sent you an article. Apparently, the Colorado Springs City Council dropped their planned utility rate change. So something to be aware of. I don't understand quite all of it because the article isn't quite clear to me. But I'm sure you'll figure it out.
Thank you for sharing that information. Yeah, we try to keep a real firm, you know, finger on the pulse of what's happening in our region. So, yeah, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Report. So, okay, thank you. All right, that takes us on to item number 10, city council agenda requests. Anybody up? Yes, councilmember Geek.
I would like for us to relook at the...
Can you lean in the mic?
I would like us to relook at the benefits or consequences of collecting lodging tax with the two new hotels that have come about in the last couple of years.
Is that something... Well, that would have to be a ballot measure.
Okay.
Voted on by the citizens. And I believe, would that be considered something you can only do in an odd-numbered year since it's a tax?
That's a good question. I don't know. That's something I'd want to ask with the city attorney. But we can certainly, whether we are planning on it for the next year or not, bring that up for discussion.
Okay. Wait till January? Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else have an agenda request? Okay. Normally, we don't let citizens come up at the end and do citizen comment. But since we do have a very beloved person that passed away in our community, you know, if you have something to share about him, please come and share. Okay. Wait, turn on the mic, please, and state your name for the record.
Oh, yes, Fran Carrick. Mr. Postalweight was the first quilt of courage that So Time in the Valley presented probably seven years ago. And he loved that quilt. And his daughter told me that he was going to be buried with it. And I am so moved. We have presented five or six since then.